Kevin was gonna log in, but I'm not sure where he's at.
Yes, sir.
Is everyone present?
Everyone that is supposed to be here is physically here. The only person that's supposed to join us is Kevin, said he was gonna join us via Zoom, but I don't see that he has joined us yet.
Oh, who's there representing Lennon Smith Soleray?
Larry's here tonight.
Oh, Larry's there?
Yes, yes.
Well, then let me ask Larry, Larry, who's gonna present all the issues to the board? You or Kevin?
I can go through it, the email I sent, and also the call we had with Penn Vest earlier today, since I sent the email.
All right, well, we'll wait, we'll wait another two minutes and see if Kevin clicks in or not.
It's all right with everybody, I'm gonna leave the window. It shows who's joining us up, so if anybody sees him come in, I don't see him from there, just let me know.
Jack, are you aware that the recording has stopped?
Yes, I just turned it off.
Okay.
There, I turned it off because I'd have to edit it at the end anyway, so.
Okay.
It looks like Kevin's there by iPhone. Okay, let's call a meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Januso?
Here.
Mrs. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Barnes?
Here.
Mrs. Barney?
Here.
Mr. Roach?
Here.
Shannon Durry?
Okay. I didn't hear Christine, is she there?
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, okay. I just want to remind everybody to please speak into the microphone, because if not, Aaron and I are gonna have an awful hard time hearing you. So Larry, you or Kevin, I'm not sure who's gonna do this, but please explain to the board all of the issues that have occurred on the Lawrence project since our last meeting, and your suggestions and recommendations of how to proceed.
Okay, so since we met on October 18th, we've been in contact with Penn Vest and DEP. We discussed the project, awarding the project, the changes were made on the rebid for the plant contract. One of the outcomes there was DEP is requiring a amendment to the permit. It is a short amendment, so it's a 15-day advertisement period instead of a full 30 days. It takes one week to get it into the Pennsylvania Bulletin to advertise it. We already submitted that permit amendment within a couple of days of them telling us what we needed to submit it. So that's been filed. So that puts, as soon as we'll see the permit amendment would be November 21st. And the department's working with us to expedite it. But we'll get into the issues on the contract here in a minute. And that permit was filed yesterday. So the, on the funding increase, so that letter of responsibility, and that is on the agenda tonight to ratify the letter, that was submitted requesting, so if you recall, last month we talked, there was the $4 million shortfall on the original Penn Vest application and the additional loan amount based on the bids received for the plant and the sewer system. That was submitted to Penn Vest, and that will be acted on at the Penn Vest January board meeting. So the $4 million, we won't know until January when Penn Vest meets. On the letter no prejudice, we did file the resolution that was authorized at the last meeting, but Penn Vest did come back. They wanted, they have changes to the resolution. If you want to file the letter no prejudice, or they call it the pre-closing letter resolution, which is the reimbursement resolution, and it's revised per the Penn Vest comments, to list the total project amount, which is the $18 million, $21,723, and to list that the funding recipient intends to pay project costs on an interim basis using its general funds until it proceeds as the Penn Vest debt obligation are received. Penn Vest also is requiring a copy of your latest bank statement to show how much is in the general fund as, I'm trying to think what the term was, but to verify that the fund, there are funds there to cover these, this interim payments. So that's the first item, the letter no prejudice. Second item, Penn Vest has also advised, because of this permit amendment, they need DEP approval before they can approve a letter no prejudice. So DEP has advised that the sanitary sewer portion can be approved, but the plant portion cannot be approved until the permit amendment's received. They did review it internally with their chief counsel, if he did receive a copy of my email. Discussion this morning, that that still stands, that they could do, the three options were the proceeding on award of the collection system, and then postponing award until such time that the permit amendment's received, and then they can fully approve the letter no prejudice. So they'd approve a partial letter no prejudice, then approve the full later, but there's the risk there because of the permit, and when you could actually award the plant contract and having a complete project.
Larry, could you put that in English first? I think what you're saying is, we could, we could award the sewers, is that correct? With that, this amendment, or letter of prejudice, or whatever you want to call it?
We need, we need to submit the resolution, and then they'd have to partially approve the letter no prejudice first. So we wouldn't be able to do it tonight. Because they did reject the original resolution, once they reviewed it with their legal. Recommended wording did come from the specialists, but then they did come back and they say it had to be changed. But they would have to approve that first, partially approve that first. So we wouldn't be able to award tonight until they, we resubmit the resolution, resubmit the letter no prejudice, and then they could, we could do an award.
And so I understand, this is on the sewers only?
Sewers only, yes.
Okay.
Well, the letter no prejudice would be submitted for the total project, and they would partially approve it. And then the second half would be held until the permit amendment's received, and then they did the full approval.
Okay. Now, can you bring us up to date as to what our time limitations are for awarding the, each contract? You know, we have time restraints on both of those, right?
Right, so on the collect, on the collection system contract, it was written in the advertisement that you had 90 days to award, or up to 120 days if there's a issue with a governmental agency approval, which would be Penn Vest or DEP. So the 90 days is November 11th, 120 days would be December 10th for the collection system.
Okay, so we have, we have until December 10th on the collection system?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Because we do have these issues with DEP?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
With Penn Vest, with Penn Vest, the issues with?
And Penn, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Then on the treatment, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On Penn Vest, what's the issues?
The letter no prejudice, getting that, the partial approval or the full approval.
Okay. And that's, that's all we have with Penn Vest? Oh, on the plant, we have limitations on the plant as far as approving the contract?
Correct, so the deadline to award on the plant, the contractor did grant an extension to November 11th to award that contract, that's what we have currently.
Say that again?
Till November 11th on the treatment plant.
Okay.
I did request an extension, if he would be willing to hold his price till December 10th, similar to the collection system. And remember, we bid that for the treatment plant contract to save money because of the supply chain, equipment, material issues, to lock in a better price. He countered, he requested a letter of intent to award, so he can begin to place orders for materials to lock in prices.
That's to extend it to?
December 10th.
December.
Right.
But we, but we actually have, we actually have until November 11th to make a decision on a treatment plan, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So continue, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So the first option I talked about was the partial letter no prejudice approval process, which has its risks. The second one would be awarding both contracts after full approval of letter no prejudice, which would be likely December 10th. So it'd be prior to the Penn Vest award or consideration board meeting on the additional $4 million request. It would be after you receive the permit amendment. It'd be contingent on the contractor for the treatment plan accepting that extension.
Okay.
And there's also, and then the third option would be rejecting all bids and rebidding. And in terms of schedule, we would recommend a rebid in January, open in February. That way, it's after the Penn Vest board meeting, you'd know where you are with the money. One other thing that came up this week, EPA has reached out on the $1 million Casey grant. So now we can include that in the bid, because we're gonna have a meeting with them in the next week of what requirements, red tape, we would need to put in the contract for that, because right now we do not have that.
Okay.
And you'd have your permit.
Go ahead, continue.
Yeah.
What's your recommendation?
Our recommendation would be to reject all bids and rebid, so we can get through this permitting process, go through the Penn Vest board meeting, and also get the Casey requirements built into the contracts.
Okay, now if, if we rebid in January, and let's just say the bids come in higher again, we'd have to go back to Penn, we'd be back in that same loop again as far as asking Penn Vest for an increase, is that correct?
Yes, that is the risk, yeah, with that alternative.
Now, what we don't know is, and we haven't had time to analyze, is assuming a worst, I guess the worst-case scenario would be that the authority got stuck for the $4 million, Penn Vest would turn us down. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and what we haven't had time to figure out is what our options would be to finance that $4 million. Nobody, you haven't had a chance of doing analysis, have you?
No, no, that's correct.
Okay. I'm gonna sit, maybe I'm jumping. Do any of the other board members have any questions?
Yes, I do. If we turned down and had to send everything back for a rebid, what happens if these, like, I'm understanding you're saying, if the prices come back much higher than they are right now, where do we go from there?
Larry, you want to answer that?
Then the process would be where we are today, if you go back to Penn Vest for more money or borrowing. We do, I think the $1 million from Casey could then be used also, because that'll be built in to the specifications. As we sit here today, I don't know if we can use that $1 million because of, they didn't get the information out. So we will have the information. But yes, that is the risk if we rebid.
Larry, isn't the $1 million from Casey already built into our financing?
It's not built into the, it's not built into your Penn Vest loan package now, no. It would be in addition to that, so it would come off either your local share, or if you wanted to reduce your loan load.
My guess is that the stipulations from EPA that are associated with that will drive the price up some, because it's, they're gonna require something more. I don't know, that it would be a big amount, because I don't know what it is.
Right, the one provision we were aware of is called Build America By America Act. That was already put in the treatment plant contract. So that's already in there, because we knew about that one, and we knew that was gonna be part of that grant. What we did not know about is the DBE requirements, and what the procedure was gonna be, and if there's anything additional. But we did, in case things lined up correctly, we did put the Build America By America Act in there. You know, so that is built into the treatment plant contract. It's not in the collection system, but it's in the plant contracts. We could, potentially, depending where they end up with the final requirements, we might be okay, but I don't know. I really don't.
So you mean, it might not be able to be used at all for this project?
That's a possibility, yes.
Because if it has like the MBE, WBE, you'd have to make sure that those bid requirements were met.
Correct.
Okay, I got you.
And if it's a good faith effort, or if there's a firm requirement, percentage requirement. And we reached out to EPA many times, and we finally got ahold of the right, the right person contacted Mike, and we have a meeting set up to go over it, so.
So that extra million might have to be added into the Penn Vest package, because we might need that extra million from Penn Vest if we can't use the grant.
Well, you can use it to offset one of the million, you're going back to Penn Vest or offset your local share.
Got you, got you.
Yep, yep.
So if we tabled this into our regular meeting on the, I think it's the 15th, how much more information would we have to make a decision here? And I think the only thing that falls in between there is that plant award requirement by November 11th, unless we did the letter of intent to award, which is kind of risky at this point, too, right? Would we have much more information from you to make a better decision by the 15th?
We would have the meeting with EPA on the $1 million Casey loan, grant, sorry, that we would know, I would hope we know the requirements there, and where we stand on your current bids. In terms of Penn Vest, so we would have to submit, you, tonight you'd want to adopt the resolution and submit the letter no prejudice. So we may have an answer back, well, it would be in process. The other, the other item I would know more about would be talking to DEP on the permit review. Because we do anticipate it'll be advertised at that time with the information we sent, so the question is if they need additional information, or if they have additional comments that we'll need to talk about.
What, what issues do you expect from DEP on this permit? I thought it was just a matter of, you know, bureaucratic, following the rules kind of thing.
And they had me submit just what changed, so I did submit limited documents just showing the change in the treatment process equipment, some of the drawings. I didn't submit a full set, what they requested to help them with an expedited review. I don't anticipate any questions, it's just a different way of doing things with them. If they request additional information would be.
And they have, they're so limited in their staff right now.
Mm-hmm. I even submitted red lines of the original design engineers report showing what was struck out and what's new to make it
clear.
Help them, help them to expedite it as much as possible, yeah.
But if we go through the rebid, we're not gonna rebid this project until late January, is that correct?
If we waited for the Penn Vest board meeting, I think the Penn Vest board meets after your January meeting.
It's the third Wednesday in January, yes.
So that'd be the day after.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey Larry, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Kevin, sorry everybody, I couldn't make it tonight, but on, on the bids, Dawn and I talked earlier, I mean, it's a 50-50 split on whether bids would come in higher or lower. I think we talked at the last regular meeting, you know, my gut then was that prices may continue to inch up, but I think the economy's leaning towards work getting a little less for some of these guys, so. I mean, we have a contract out right now, a line work contract for stormwater. If I got three bids, I was happy four months ago. We got 10 people picked up, and it looked like they're in a dogfight already for it, so. I think it's 50-50, but it's leaning towards you'd probably get some better bids on at least the line work. The plant work may inch up a little bit, but we already seen the big increase, so the increase should not be substantial if there is any, so. So I think there's a risk there, but I think it's less than what we would have experienced two months ago.
Kevin, what I'm trying to establish is, how much time are we gonna lose here?
You would, you would award at your February meeting, and then we would set closing with Penn Vest, the same time it would have been anyway, so. And that's why I might.
But that's assuming the bids come in pretty close to our, yeah.
Yes.
If they come in, you know, a couple million higher or whatever, then we're back in the loop again, going back to Penn Vest again, right? We're the same, chasing our tail. Because then we'd have to wait for, we'd have to wait for their March meeting to approve the next one and so forth. Is that correct?
Yeah, the timing would be better on the rebid, because we wouldn't have this lag. We were off by about a month, and the next time if we had an issue, the timing would work out better. I mean, the other thing we could do is ask for, to hedge our bets, ask for another million right now, just so we have a little safeguard built in. That way, we don't have to get back to another meeting.
Okay, let me go back to, if, what if, what if we deferred making a decision tonight until we could figure? I mean, the worst, the worst-case scenario, if my understanding is, we have $4 million that we could possibly be responsible for, the authority could be responsible for, is that correct? Kevin?
Yeah.
Is it, so if we, you know, looked into bond financing and, and whatever options were, might be available financially to, to cover that $4 million, we could still possibly award these contracts, is that correct?
Yeah, after DEP issued a permit, if the contractor extended his bid through, I think we need till around December 10th to get the letter from of no prejudice and get the DEP permit you could award in the contracts in mid-December.
Okay, now who? We have until December 10th now on the, on the sewers, is that correct?
Yeah, we had till the November 11th, but there is a provision that if you have financing issues, like issue, get another 30 days to work it out. So we even vote that, so his contract doesn't need awarded till December 10th. But Mealy's contract, we need something from him to extend another 30 days.
If we do this?
And he wants, he wants that letter, and that makes me very uncomfortable, the letter. I mean, I, if all this money was sitting here, it would be different, that letter, we've seen that issue before, but with Penn Vest being a question mark, then that's more of a issue, I believe, so.
If we, if we do follow that, do we risk losing the $1 million Casey grant? Because it may not follow the EPA requirements?
Could. Until we have this call this week, we won't know what they're thinking, and obviously, we're gonna ask that question first, but I think it makes it much, much cleaner if we're in a rebid situation, instead of working through. If you want to work through that, we will put every effort to get that, that in the mix, so.
Because that could help offset the cost.
And that's gonna, that's gonna be on the plant contract as well, so.
Okay, I'm still not understanding, what's our drop dead date right now on the plant contract? Is it November 11th?
It's November 11th, as we stand today.
Yes.
And that's without giving him the letter of intent?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
When is your call?
When, yeah, with DEP and everything, when's, when's that all happen? What's the timing on that?
Well, the call with EPA on the grant, I need to get with Mike, it's, you know what, he was pushing it two weeks out, I'm gonna try to push for an earlier meeting. He was, the day, it was the 14th, 15th, or 16th. I'll see if he has a date available soon, trying to.
I couldn't remember off the top of my head what was sent over, but I thought it was towards the middle of the month or towards the end of the month.
But you're saying right now, we don't have the EPA money figured in the financing for Lawrence as it is, is that correct?
It was not included in the Penn Vest application, no.
So theoretically, if everything stayed the same, and we got the $1 million, we could only, we could actually only need $3 million from Penn Vest, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Or it could cover an overrun if there's a rebid.
What I, what I'm, what I'm trying to do, guys, and I don't know if you can help me with this, I'd like to kick this can down the road till, till like next week. I don't particularly like these special meetings and have them putting everybody at, you know, taking advantage of their time, which I appreciate the time they did donate already, but this would, that would give us time to figure out, if Penn Vest, for whatever reason, did turn us down, how would we finance that $4 million? And we could look into options on financing that money, and what it would do to our rates and our customers. And then, then we could better analyze whether we want to take a risk on that scenario or not. Kevin and Larry, are you understanding what I'm saying?
Yep.
Do you see any reason why we can't do that? As long as we get back to. As long as we get back to Mealy before November 11th, we're still okay, is that correct?
Yes. Yep.
Can, can you, can you guys, what do we have to do to look into financing? We have to get ahold of, uh,
Sean Garen.
Sean Garen? Chris, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, Sean would be, would be able to advise you on the financial aspects.
All right, and then, the, the primary issue here, from what I, what I was understanding on the phone today is that PennVest has told us that the $4 million increase is not a slam dunk with them, is that correct?
Correct, it was, it was not guaranteed.
That, all right. So, am I, am I understanding this correctly that the $4 million is really what the issue is here?
Yes.
Okay. Do any of the other board members have any questions? All right, so, I would suggest to the board that we hold another special meeting next week, and in the interim, we get, we'll get ahold of Sean Garen and find out, find out if we are stuck with that $4 million, how can we, how can we finance it? And, and you know, what risk we're taking.
I don't think there's any harm with that proposal.
Go ahead, Roseanne.
I don't think there's any harm with your proposal. I, I think that way we've explored those options before the deadline.
That would be before November 11th, correct?
Yep.
That's correct.
Because that drop dead date is November 11th to award Millie.
Right.
At the last bid.
Yes.
That he came in at.
Now, the other question is, let's say we have solved the financing problem. What other roadblocks, if any, are there to awarding the, the treatment plan contract in time, in this November 11th timeframe? Is there anything else, any other roadblocks to doing that?
Uh, you would not have the, well, for PennVest, it would be the letter of no prejudice, which would be held until the permit amendment would be approved.
Does that hold up the entire money for the whole project or just this $4 million?
And we're gonna need the, uh, letter of no prejudice before any awards, so if we want to award until December, we would just have additional information for everybody next week in order to make a decision if you're rejecting or holding until December.
Holding until December requires the letter of intent to award though, correct?
Yes, correct. And we can talk to him more about that this week and indicate that that's got a lot of agit with it. Would he extend without that and see what he says?
Okay.
Because if he said, if he says absolutely not, then we know there's a line in the sand then for him, so.
Okay, I mean, you need to explain to him all these other issues, you know, with, with DEP and PennVest and everything. You know, hopefully he can work with, if not, the rebid isn't going to be exactly something in his favor either.
No, no, that's what, we will explain to them that there's, there's a heavy consideration for, for rebid, so. Let's see what he says.
Okay. All right, so, we, we can wait till sometime next week then, is that, is that my, is that, we're in agreement, Kevin and Larry?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need, do you need any motions though?
Dennis, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was just asking if they needed any motions tonight, though.
Well, two of the motions were to resubmit the letter of no prejudice, which I would say that, based on discussion night, we'll be holding on that.
So, I think the answer with Chris is saying, item number three on the agenda and item number four on the agenda are tabled then. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, okay, when I get to the end of the, end of the, the other items on the agenda, we'll, we'll, pick up a time next week for another special meeting. Okay, so item number five, the motion to approve the letter of responsibility for PennVest funding application. Does that need any further explanation?
That was.
Somebody want to make, I'm sorry?
That was the $4 million request for the additional funding at the January board meeting. Uh, so that'd be to ratify the letter that was submitted requesting additional $4 million to PennVest.
Okay. Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, real call vote, please.
Mr. Januso?
Aye.
Mrs. Rogers?
Aye.
Mrs. Barnes?
Aye.
Mrs. Barney?
Aye.
Mr. Roach?
Aye.
Okay, then item number six, motion to, uh, for a resolution to PennVest. This is reimbursement resolution revised per PennVest comments. I'm sorry, I heard tabled or what?
This is part of the letter of no prejudice, so I think this would be tabled until you make a decision if you want to proceed with the letter of no prejudice with the contract awards. So, in, yeah, yes.
Yes, what, table it?
Table it.
Okay, so I, motion, item number six will be, be tabled. And number seven?
Same, tabled.
Same, we, we table that as well. So we can't act on those until when?
You can, you can act on six and seven tonight. That's a decision, you're submitting the letter of no prejudice to proceed with contract award.
Okay, so we can just do that at the, at the next meeting, should we decide to proceed? Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so we'll take, we'll table those along with items three and four then.
Will they do, act that fast?
Yes, yes, they said it would take one to two weeks to approve it.
Okay.
Yes. And they've already reviewed it with legal, that these are the final changes they're asking for.
Okay.
Okay. So, now we need to, um, pick a day next week for another, uh, emergency meeting. I'm open, so anybody tell me what day, I think Tuesday's not a good day, it's election day.
Correct. I have Wednesday, the 9th, Thursday, the 10th, uh, this room's available.
Either day is fine for me.
Anybody else have any comments, issues, delays, can't make it?
10th is best for me, Thursday.
The 10th?
The 10th would work.
11:10 at 6:00, 6:30? 6:30?
6:30.
6:30 would be better for me.
Okay, at 6:30. So the next meeting, emergency meeting is going to be on, our special meeting is going to be on November 10th at 6:30, and, um, in the interim, Chris, you can contact, um,
Sean?
Sean, and, and we can discuss. I will have to, we'll have to do a conference call, whatever, discuss financing operations and, or possibilities, and then somehow we'll have to get an email out to the rest of the board members, I guess.
Okay, I'll set that up, Don.
And I don't know, I guess two of us would be allowed to sit in on it. If one of the other board members wants to sit in on it, let me know, and we can include one other board member in on the, on the discussions. Aaron, Roseanne, Craig, I don't know whoever's available. I don't know when it's going to be, so.
Yeah, let's find out availability, but Roseanne, I think you're best suited to knowing and understanding the issues, challenges.
I'd be happy to, um, be involved in that. I just need to know when it would be scheduled.
Okay, I'll find, I mean, Sean's, Sean's generally pretty available. Is there any days that work better for you, times like morning, afternoon, Don?
Uh, I can tell you Mondays and Wednesdays are bad for me. But other than that, um,
Thursday, this Thursday or Friday would be okay?
Uh, let me hold on a sec.
Wait.
Uh, I'm pretty sure they are. Let me look.
Thursday's a busy day during the day for me. I've got meetings all day, eight to four.
Okay, how about Friday?
I can make Friday work.
Okay.
Okay, shoot for, shoot for something after 10 o'clock on Friday.
Okay, I'll set that up and I'll email you too, okay?
Okay. And Mike, you and or Shanna should be included on that call.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions from anybody? Somebody want to make a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Aye, 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 aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Don. Bye-bye.
Recording stopped.